That this particular group that you say is great. Won't go in here and play something about dropping a bomb in a mall. They should be checked.
You know, sir, I'm saying they're checked here because, you know, Richard Poploski went to North Catholic High School. Do you want to check all the Catholics? Do you want there's Christians and white up here?
You are being an idiot.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not, sir. You're being a racist.
Sir. Please sit. Please sit down, sir. We'll get to you after Darlene. Darlene.
I would like to apologize for, um, it's very night. I got a little excited here. I would like to just cover a few things. I learned from the filming that's going to work. That's this early this fall, maybe September, October. Hopefully, okay, I was in November. I had questions from last, uh, from last month. I'm just trying to go back and work some of the things that I know. I appreciate your calls. I'm totally one of my three cats. Delete the all my messages. I apologize for that. Um, at any rate, um, I'm back on the, I'm very grateful to say thank you, Chief, if I have the statement sign. I sit in my dining room and I've watched the number of cars go by. Hopefully, we'll be able to get more than 58 tickets. We're seeing one down here, but then I just, I also understand about the vacation of these officers. You know what I was wondering? Since I don't know for sure, but from what I understand, we have our taxes lowered a little bit on account of having a little extra funds, one mill. Does that money interact with?
You're talking about the school taxes?
Yeah, that money isn't the money that we could use to possibly, instead of having it a little lower and hiring one more place officer.
No, that actually, that's a completely separate kidding. That's just for the school district.
Okay, just learning.
Our million is seven point two, which is considerably lower than the 23.15.
Okay, I was wondering, Mr. Farman, Chief of Farman's?
He's not.
No, I was over there before. I was wondering if those hydrants happened that got flushed out because I just have a very feeling about fire and I wanted to check on that. I also noticed that anywhere on the, um,
Darlene caught fire. It was more flushed out this past weekend. I don't know if one by you wasn't one of them, but I know by me they were all flushed out.
One on Morley and one on Wall Batch. I'm concerned with the ones that are both relatively away from my house. The one on Morley Avenue and the one on Wall Batch, the two places in my home.
Yeah, I'm not sure which ones they were, but I know how few.
I just had a bad feeling a while back about fire and it's been working on my brain. And then I seen a thing on the evening news and da-da-da-da. So I just wanted to check up on that. I also wanted to check up, Chief, any word on 25 Mon Arstons. I know we have a thing in the yard, but from Green Tree down to the Tussle Bridge, no signs yet. Unless I'm missing.
You know there's one right before your house, 25 Mon Arstons. Right, right there at Forsyth Woodbridge. Woodridge, I'm sorry.
Yeah, from there, from Green Tree River to there, there used to be one on Area 11. You were going to look into that one. Something they did with the poles, they took them down. They did something with the poles, put another pole beside another pole, and they never put it back up. I, I, I just, I can't stop trying to slow those people down. They think it's the odd one until the day I die or move out of my house. I'm lost. I have to do everything I can to try and slow this down. And also on Second Avenue, I asked about, did anybody go over? Maybe have Pendot or Burrow or whoever does that. At the end of Second Avenue here, Second Street here, or vice versa, you meet here. Right here at the Mount LeBlanc job at STA here. You have a business up here where they're coming down here. And you have a business up here where they're coming up here. You have like a six-way intersection and there's not one stop anywhere. And I'm trying to school us out there. And believe you me, there's been close calls.
And I, and I think that in the next couple of days, that's, that's under work. Well, we, we had all your notes from last, last month.
Like I said, I'm just going over my, just going over my stuff here. There's my extracurriculars here. I learned about the single letter. All I was going to try and see is if there was any way, but if that magazine doesn't match up to what the expectations has to be for it to be published for everybody to get it, well, then it doesn't, then that's that. Okay, is there any way that, how much di- I was going to say, how much difference is it only because, for example, I get the first gazette. I don't get the truth. Is it really that much difference to have including this one as a first of this one?
Yes, I believe it's about 30 or 40 percent, Chief.
Okay, I don't know. I can understand that. Okay.
And any way, you know, any way we can save money. We're trying to.
Yes, sir, I can, I can definitely understand that. Okay, I just want to thank you everybody for the time, for their insight. And I also want to thank everybody for all their help. I mean that, you're only taking that extra time.
I still want to get together with you and talk.
Absolutely. I thank you all very much for everything.
Thank you.
Sir, then we'll follow up.
I'm Stephen Parker, Mr. Romo, back. And, um, in 1989, I was a special agent as I went to Western Science for three to six weeks. And then interviewed for a job and got the job in December. Applied for a secret clearance. Normally, it's not the FBI that investigates people from the Defense Department, that's me, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry. What's your question?
I'm stating for someone, basically, the justification. The only way the FBI can investigate someone is if they know there's a crime. A friend of mine was an FBI agent. He went to Corporal Lane, Idaho. There were, you know, white supremacists, whatever groups. And he said, well, they can't investigate them and that they've got a legal thing to do. Now, the thing is, is that someone being investigated, being mentally ill, the investigators came to me to sign releases for my medical records. So the Department of Defense has my fingerprints. They know I was in the mental hospital. And eventually, I was a facility security officer for the company. I had training for that. But we lost the clearance within about five years. So in my situation, a friend of mine was a lifer in the Army and said that the government keeps things forever. They would know that I suffer from mental illness because they have my fingerprints and medical records. But other people, you've seen about the mental illness, they don't know.
Sir, again, I'm sorry. What's your question for this counsel?
I'm just stating that you can't investigate the Muslims, or you can't investigate mentally ill. And with the paperwork and with the government paperwork, I don't have the right to bear a firearm. So then it's one thing to say, we should check out the Muslims because they're dangerous. We know all over the world that they're doing things out of their mosques. But the US government, the state governments, they're more concerned about crazy people than they are about people that could be potential terrorists.
Thank you, sir. Follow up.
Thank you. I am, as you said, I'm David Cucking. Legally, I suppose that means I'm the trust manager of the Pennsylvania Charitable Trust of Singles Without Seating Parish, which owns several properties in Carnegie. But most people don't recognize me as a David, a Catholic pastor here. Our local councilor and mayor, um, I, um, I can't speak to the procedural issues that have been debated here. I don't want to take a position on those. But I did want to say something about the, um, the specification of the AIC as Muslim and the discussions here about Muslims in particular. Because I, I think those singling out of that particular religious group is somewhat prejudicial. And, um, I feel somewhat, I feel uncomfortable with that. The, um, it was clear by first heard of the Republic of China, the People's Republic of China, which of course has over a billion citizens. And, um, and with this effect that China is so large that whatever you say about China, it's true somewhere in China. And so, uh, and that can be also said of other very, very large groups of people, such as the Catholic Church, which also has over a billion adherents. And also Islam with over one billion adherents. So, uh, it's true, there are bad things people say about Muslims. And probably those are often true. And yet, at the same time, of course, that does not mean that Muslims deserve any special scrutiny. Moreover, I believe specifically in, uh, in Carnegie, there have been some people distributing, some have called information. I refer specifically to this leaflet that, which arrived on one of my properties, uh, maybe two weeks ago. And again, there's a bunch of punitive information which is given about Islam. But again, I find it prejudicial and even offensive. And so I wanted to go on record as saying that I don't think it's fair to, uh, to single out Islam specifically for the kind of scrutiny that seems to be called for here. I don't think that there is, that the AIC has given us any occasion to do so. I certainly couldn't find any such information. I appreciate the fact that it is recognized as unethical to, to do so. Though I don't take a position on the law. I don't agree with the law that well. And, uh, and simply to offer, um, my personal support to, uh, to the AIC or any Muslims in the community who may be, uh, who may be distressed by this, uh, this conversation. I want the public and Muslims in particular to know that I, um, support their effort to open up a religious center in town. And we'll do what I can to, uh, to support it in other ways when that occasion arises. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie McKee. I live on Fifth Avenue. And my main job tonight is I have a neighbor who does not pay her garbage. We should have the same landlord. And she lives in 213 Fifth Avenue. And I took pictures to my people I came and also on other occasions. I've complained at least three or four times to Waste Management, Allied Waste. And, um, one day I can see the burrow come by, maybe five or six months later. But the issue's not been resolved. She still has, I think she's paid garbage three months, not three, or she's left here. And I've expressed my feelings numerous times. But I did see the burrow come by one day, but like I said, nothing's been resolved. She has two garbage cans. There's like 10 garbage cans, garbage bags sitting on top of her cans right now in the side. And, um, I'm concerned because gardens, I don't want to see grass around the house in our neighborhood. Yes.
And the chief more than done over there too.
Her name is Tonya Schultz.
No, is she piling any of her garbage on your garbage? Or it's just simply just piled up?
Oh, she has. Numerous neighbors have told me, as we've talked about it. Neighbors across the street have approached me and said that when I go out, they see her put her garbage. Also, just in the last two or three weeks, um, she put her garbage with mine. I put it back on her side of the house. One of her friends that was living with her took the cans and the garbage that she put on mine and put it back with mine. I put it back and carried her cans back on the side of her house.
What, you know how?
We played musical garbage. So the last time my son took a couple of bags and set them right on in front of her door. If he didn't break them open or not, which he wanted to, why? No, we just set them on a porch to let her know that, you know, enough's enough. And it's our own. Right, we all pay our own bills and everything. And why does someone just get away with putting their garbage wherever or not putting it anywhere?
A couple of things. First of all, what's your last name again?
McKee.
Hello, Mrs. McKee.
Hi.
This is, this is something that I experienced in my own neighborhood. There's a duplex almost right across the street from me. And I'm still, even as mayor, unsure what the process is. So, and this is not to be disrespectful to anybody up here. But what is our process in this borough when someone doesn't pay their garbage? Because I've heard a couple of different things. Now, I know Mr. Romo, in one case, it wasn't my neighbor. There was a, you, you did send a letter and that person didn't correct their action. But what happens when they don't correct the action? Because I'm, I'm kind of unsure. Is it via, is it Waste Management's responsibility? Is it our responsibility? Is it the landlord's responsibility? Because I, the neighbor across from me would not correct his action, not at all. And, uh, that, that, I reported it to the landlord a number of times. And even though he received a letter from the borough and the landlord, he did nothing. So my question, and this is a sincere, sincere question. I, I don't know whose responsibility it is. So can anybody elaborate on that?
I, I went to Waste Management, excuse me. And like I said, I reported a couple of times. They said it was the borough's, um, issues to deal with. They made a phone call to the borough while I was there. And I did see the borough come by one time. But after that, right, after that, I've complained a couple more times again to Waste Management because, you know, it's, it's just ongoing.
I, I, I think maybe, you know, just like y'all yourself, Derek Mayor, that, you know, maybe we, we need to sit down and look at this a little more closely. Um, how we address this, maybe, um, when people, when they come from occupancy permit, they have to show us that they have, you know, paid for the garbage pickup. Um, you know, take some kind of stuff in that direction. But, you know, we need to keep it on radar and look at it.
In my contract, my renter's contract, it did say that we were responsible for our garbage. Or, you know, our utility service, our garbage. So we knew that.
Have you reported this to your landlord? Has he's, and has he got anything?
He has sent a letter. It's rather long ago. Um, he has sent a letter saying that, you know, the house should be set up. The outside and everything should be here for any garbage, but other than that.
He hasn't taken any action?
No. If she's not going to pay the bill, then I think he should pay the bill and they should pick up the garbage. Whatever it takes.
I, I agree. I think the landlord should be held accountable in that type of situation.
If the garbage is not collected, we should notice to the landlord and give him a reasonable period of time to have it removed. If he fails to remove it within, after that period of time, we issue a citation. They're not guilty for L.I. Waste.
Right, I understand.
As L.I. Waste would like us to be. As long as there's no garbage, I don't care if anybody pays their bill. My concern is there's no garbage.
There's, there's, I told you.
When, when there is garbage, you have to make me aware of it. Each occurrence has to be addressed like it's the first.
Okay, cool. Every week it keeps growing. For the last two, three, four weeks, it's, it's kept growing this big now.
I can't watch one property. If you call and make me aware of it, if you're glad it's a black pink flag, then I will address it.
And you're offering? Julie will be there. Pardon me?
Romo.
I will, I will give you a call then. She's scheduled me about very soon, which I hope, um, she'll be all confirmed. But I will take, I will, I will give you a call. Um, it was pre-taped before. Somebody, I don't know if the borough does that or whatever, but I thought they'd tag.
You asked their notice or did you do anything?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment, Paula?
Are we supposed to still give our name to the press? Joanne Breon, Charter Ectra. You know, in the interest of all this going on about not notifying, people not being able to get the notification, it would be, I, um, how it's a phrase, an overabundance of caution that you guys would see that it would be put out somewhere, even on the building or whatever, the information about the public hearing. Solicitor Lucas said, we did the minimum the state required.
That was real. That's what you said last month.
No, you said it tonight.
And we did what the state required.
You said, yes, you did.
You said minimum last month.
Well, we'll still get the tape because you.
It's mine, but it, right, we did do the minimum.
Right, right. But like I said, it should be more, like the gentleman and the lady said. Now, we go by Dillon's rule. You know what that is in the state? Solicitor, Dillon's rule? We go by what the state tells you municipality what to do. We just can't go offline off in every direction. I mean, you guys just can't do anything. You have to do what the state allows. So now my suggestion would be that we petition Representative Nick Cody to put forth a bill that we would be able to advertise in the Signal Item. Now, like you said, it's a state rule, law, that it has to be a daily paper. Is that what you said?
Newspaper of general circulation.
But not a daily paper?
General is paid as a paper. Jack, it, generally.
They actually say it has to be a paid.
Well, that's basically what it means. It means it has to be.
Does it say that?
For and daily newspaper, yes.
And it says paid for. You'll show me that where it says that.
That was a court, that was a common police court holding is what it was. It says, what the statute says is newspapers of general circulation.
Where does it say he paid for?
A court holding.
A court holding? I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
A court rule.
Okay, well, I think now it's time that maybe we should ask Representative Cody because the legislators are the ones who make these rules and laws that we are governed by. That it can be the news or the ordinances and the legal notices put into papers such as the Signal Item because we have tons of those in the area. And I don't see any reason. It's not going to cost them anything.
Mrs. Preon, I'd interrupt you. But depending on when that particular hearing is scheduled, Signal Item comes out on one day of the week. So depending on what, what day of the week that hearing is, that criteria can't be met.
Does the legal notice go in a different day?
Depending on what we're advertising, yes.
Sure.
Yes, it doesn't run the same day.
It's not Thursdays?
It was advertised twice. I mean, and the Tribune Review was advertised twice.
I, I grant you that. I realize that. But the Signal Item is, it was in the paper. Goes to 2,800 homes in Carnegie. Check and see how many homes get the Tribune Review. Very few. In comparison, okay, enough said like that. But I still think that we ought to change the law.
Well, we can't change. I mean, the legislators can change the law. I mean, we can certainly ask them to.
Well, yeah, it makes sense. And more people, more transparency, the better informed the public is, the less wibbling you guys get from us. Something happened.
This is Preon. One, one question to you. So if, if we did come up with some type of compromise where the general meetings, we still advertise in our own paper and just add to public hearings, which aren't many, to the Signal Item in addition to what we already do, do you think that would be something that would be welcome? Is that what's your concern is improved hearings?
From us, the way that I think, when a paper comes free to the house, to every house, that's where it should go.
So that would, that would satisfy your, what you're talking about?
Would it not satisfy yours?
No, satisfies me. That's why I brought it up.
But, but Mr. Mayor, I, I would think we could just do legally. It would be all our legal ads, not what it is, not just public hearings.
Yes.
I'm saying just in addition, Mike.
Go above and beyond.
We don't want, you don't want to pay twice for it. We'd only want to pay one newspaper.
Oh, you know what?
The school problem.
The problem with that would be.
You have to pay twice for it. You got to do what's legal and then just add to public hearings. How many are there? A half dozen maybe, if even that?
Mrs. Preon, the problem with this one, for instance, the two hearings we had this last month. They had to be advertised less than seven day, no, more than seven days before the hearing.
That's very possible to do.
When the hearing comes up, as was with the AIC. May 17th, we, we didn't know when the Planning Commission was going to, or the council didn't know when the Planning Commission was going to make its recommendation. Now, for instance.
Wait a minute, excuse me. You said the Planning Commission had a public hearing.
They had a public hearing.
Well, we knew nothing about that.
But that was African, but that, that's, we, this board, this board didn't advertise that. They advertised everyone, okay? But they make a recommendation.
We know. We've heard this.
The recommendation, no, the recommendation came on May 17th. But we had one for hardware advertising. It was at that same planning, planning commission. It came out, no, hear me out. It came out a week later. It was dated, but maybe it's more than that thing it was. Now, if we're going to schedule this hearing, Mr. Woodman's paper, we would have to do it in that paper 10 days. Two, we would have to know that if it was paper, two weeks before the hearing, which with this particular certificate, if it would have played out that way, just wouldn't have had enough time.
However, had it been in the Signal Item that the planning, the planning.
What I'm saying is there wouldn't have been enough time to use the Signal Item to get the hearing out.
If they would have used it for the public hearing before the Planning Commission, everybody would be on the alert and they would be paying attention and calling the people on the Planning Commission.
But that's, that's fine. You could possibly be right. But from this board's point of view.
I, I don't argue with that.
We wouldn't have enough time.
The bottom line is it's something we can talk, something we can look at and talk about and discuss and figure out what we can possibly do better.
I agree. And I did want to ask you, you mentioned that you have new ordinance that you're going to be proposing. And I thought, that was four. And when will you be putting that in the Tribune Review? During your talk, you mentioned, yeah.
That was the, I don't know when that will go in the Tribune Review. That wasn't my ordinance, it's the borough's ordinance. It was the ordinance for the dumping in the waterways. That's what you're talking about?
Yes, right.
Yeah, that should go in, I, I would, as soon as possible. See, now, ordinance, I don't think there's a public hearing on that. It'll just let people know that.
No, just the legal notice about that ordinance, okay.
And that's the thing. And the only thing I was saying, that if we go above and beyond with the public hearings and put it in the Signal Item, it might be a, a small additional cost plus, maybe a couple hundred bucks a year, maybe even three, but it's worth it if, if that's what the public wants. That's all.
Well, then Steve putting it on the website makes a big difference.
Steve's putting it on that website.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, um, speaking again of the Tribune Review, a friend of mine alerted me to this, or I wouldn't have seen this. And I don't know if I would be standing here talking about this tonight, but I think it's important. Did you see, it's out on Friday's Tribune Review? Everybody? It says here, violation of Sunshine Act to Costmore. Elected officials will face stiffer penalties beginning in August if they're found to have violated the state sunshine act. Governor Tom Horgan on Thursday signed legislation that will increase the maximum penalty to $1,000 from $100 for officials who hold. You see, they have here, who violate the law. I think it's inviolate the law, which broadly requires government officials to hold meetings in public. 22 senators co-sponsoring the bill. So you four gentlemen on council are getting off easy with a $100 fine.
No, Mrs. Preon, you're wrong. Four gentlemen, what Mrs., just to clarify, what Mrs. Preon is talking about?
I'm not finished. I'm not finished.
And I'm addressing your concern right here, right now, because I think it needs to be addressed because the public needs, because the public needs to know that what you're accusing us of. What happened?
And we got that $100 fine. Not to interrupt you.
And what happened was, Councilman Vares, I, Councilman DeLasse, and Councilman Sarasfield went to breakfast as frats. And we can't go to breakfast? Is your quick thinking, we can't go? That's ridiculous. Solicitor, would you clarify?
Solicitor Lucas.
It is not a violation of the Sunshine Act for four people to go to breakfast. Mrs. Preon, can I finish what I'm saying?
Open.
It is not a violation of the Sunshine. Mrs. Preon, can I finish what I'm saying? It is not a violation of the Sunshine Act for four people to go to a breakfast without, without it being advertised. That's utterly ludicrous. That is not the point of the Sunshine Act. The point of the Sunshine Act is that there would be transparency in borough council operations. And they, the mere fact that they are meeting at a breakfast does not constitute an official act or legislative action. And that is what they would have done. Now, had you been able to show that they did detect an official action or legislative.
or legislative act at that breakfast, the remedy would be for them to take the action at the borough council meeting. This, and I am pretty much involved in every ordinance and action this council takes, there has not been one official action or ordinance or any type of legislative, um, action taken by this council that has not been done at a public meeting.
How many of you here remember Al Falcioni?
He was a mayor and dear friend of mine.
Who said that?
I did, over here, right here.
Your friend of yours? He was mayor of this town for a while?
He was mayor for, for four years.
Became chief, remember?
He was mayor for four years.
But he was on council before that?
Yes, ma'am.
But he was very well respected. And people looked to him for advice on how things should be operated within the borough. When I first met Mr. Falcioni, we were sort of adversaries, but as time went on, we became friends. And when I got interested in politics, the one thing he told me was to be very, very careful of not meeting outside the public meeting room with contemporaries, with, with your one, two, three, four. Yeah, I didn't go to it. Anyhow, that constitutes a quorum. And anytime you have a quorum, there's a possibility that constitutes a quorum. Why do you think the senators left the state of Wisconsin whenever they were going to vote on the, um, huge stuff?
They were on the smell of vote.
They, because there would not be a quorum.
But that has absolutely nothing to do with publicly or publicly having a breakfast.
So every political, every function we go to, whether it's something at the park, for instance, for us, the name Falcioni field, that's not an illegal function. For us to attend the Easter egg hunt, that's an illegal function, because it's a quorum.
Mr. Falcioni told me, and very clearly, very bluntly, said that if there, if there are three council people, councilmen, on the street talking, innocently, not immediately, and a fourth council person walks up, one of them has to leave because it gives the appearance of a quorum.
And that's what you said, if that's what you said, it gives the appearance. And if four people on this council choose to not, to not be concerned with the appearance it gives, then that's entirely up to them. But if it is a violation of the state sunshine law, then the answer to that is, no, it is not.
So you're accused, let me get this straight, you're accusing us of violation of the sunshine?
I, I...
Just to clarify, just to clarify, like a yesterday event? You're, you're accusing us of violation of the sunshine? That's what you basically came up and said.
Well, I'm reading what it said in the newspaper.
Okay.
No, you said we're going to get a $100 fine, Mrs. Prion. That's what you said. So, so you accused us of violating the sunshine. Somebody had to file a report, I'm taking that it was you, and you're expecting that we're going to receive a $100 fine for eating breakfast together. Joanne, you came into that...
I'm reading that, I'm not...
You came into that building because you saw my car. That's your excuse. Then you wanted to get a cup, cup of coffee for whatever reason to take out.
I got a phone call. Someone slightly walked in with yellow...
You got a phone call, they were there, okay. Now, when you come in, you didn't say hi, you didn't say how you doing or whatever, you started talking about politics. Didn't you do that? You wanted to talk about the last council meeting. You didn't ask anybody anything, were you married, this, that, whatever? You wanted to talk about politics.
What did I say?
Joanne, sit down.
And what was my response, Mrs. Prion? That we're there as friends and we're not going to discuss any politics. That's exactly what I told you, isn't it?
And you did not deny that you called me, that said that I was nuts and that I was crazy at the last meeting?
Anyone that makes comments like you did to me at the last meeting, uh, I think a lot of people in the audience would be concerned as well. You know the comments that you made.
I'm sorry, you told me...
I haven't made comments about Hitler and Mussolini, if I need to refresh your memory.
I said that, I said that...
Tell the audience what she said, yeah.
I said that when we were at breakfast.
Hitler and Mussolini did some good, they got the trains to run all the time. I find that personally appalling that anyone would make a comment that Hitler and Mussolini did any good. And she further went on to, she said, you know, you did, they did this to your people. That's utterly appalling.
You're taking this so much out of context, I can't believe it.
Our solicitor was sitting right next to me when you made that comment. I'm appalled that you would make a comment. And then you said to me, does Mr. Delosso know what he's talking about? I find that utterly ridiculous. That's why I made the comment that I thought you were crazy. Because anyone that makes a comment, and I've told people that, anyone that makes a comment to those effect, that Hitler and Mussolini did some good, whether it was taken out of context or not, is wrong.
You've got to learn your history. In the beginning, Hitler did good things for Germany. You know how he turned out? Mussolini did good things for Italy.
I'm sorry.
But I'm sorry you can't make believe of...
No, I'm not making any leak when it comes to Hitler and Mussolini, because they killed thousands and millions of people with the Holocaust.
That's right, that's what, that's the whole point, that's what it led to.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Yeah, please.
Let's move on.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I don't want for council people to be, um, at meetings other than at a council meeting, at a public meeting.
Well, Mrs. Prion, we're not going to end our friendship because you don't like four of us going to breakfast.
Or you don't like us going to a drive-in, or Kennywood, or going to a church, or anything else.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were that sensitive. I'm very, very sorry, I, I thought you were men.
Well, ma'am, you're accusing us of violating the sunshine law.
All I'm saying is, Mr. Falcioni, you was the seer of Carnegie as far as politics went. Does any, you agree with that? Anybody agree with that? That he knew what he was talking about?
Ma'am, you're, Mrs. Prion, you're accusing us of violating the sunshine law. You can shrop this of Mr. Falcioni or what have you, but the bottom line is, you're still accusing us of violating the sunshine law.
Okay, well, you keep saying sunshine law. You're, you're, you're going against something that's not quite right. Whenever you meet, you know, and a forum, that's a quorum. And anytime there's a quorum, there's a possibility of a vote. Sorry, but that's the way it is.
What are we going to vote on? We're sitting at a, at a restaurant in the morning.
We don't know that, because we don't want to invite...
You need to get a life and do something, you know that? I've been associating with you for a number of years, and you went off, went off the deep end, you went off the deep end.
Mrs. Prion, do you have anything else to add? I mean, utterly, come on.
I apologize to all of you, I really do. If I hurt your feelings, if I didn't stroke you the right way, I'm sorry. But that's the appearance it gives, whether it's right or wrong, that is the appearance it gives.
To you.
And to a lot of other people, too.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Judge Luke on the down of Wagon Street. A couple of you guys lay on a totally different public here. I'm very concerned about the Carnegie ordinance, or lack of an ordinance, of open flame fire. I have a neighbor every weekend that starts a fire at 10 o'clock at night, and he lets it burn until two, three, four o'clock in the morning. And meanwhile, he's going to bed at two, three, an hour or two before. I've contacted the Carnegie police. I'm a lot under the understanding of what you are, and you're not allowed to burn in Carnegie. I've seen him burn tables, I've seen him burn chairs, I've seen him burn garbage. Now, this fire is approximately four to five feet away from his wood pile. And he's caught up behind two of my wooden sheds, all right? Two weeks ago, I called the police because it was unintended. The police come down, and I had the officers observe this. It was pouring down rain, it was on a Friday evening. I felt bad that the officers, when they got out of their car to walk from our alleyway in Noel Street to my side porch, they were soaked. And this fire was a good four to five foot high, and it was pouring down rain. And it did not go out until quarter after one. He was told to put it out, he never went back out to put it out again. He did it again last weekend. I come home, it's summertime, we like to leave our windows open. My house smells like smoke. My furniture is starting to smell like smoke. When I come home, that's why we leave our windows open in the summer, you smell fires and everything else. I don't want to come home to a smoke-filled house. And every time the police come down, he says, we're about to have a cookout. I was in the house eating hot dogs. And I think this is crazy, there's a turn on the 11 o'clock news, and there's fires everywhere. Now, approximately 10 feet away from my wooden sheds, I have another house there, it's 34 Wagner, which is a wood-framed house. If that catches, then it's going to catch my house, because I'm only like four foot away from that. I think we need to do something. As I come down to see the chief, not in the lobby, I've met two other people that are having the same problem, they're telling me I've been so bad. I've been, I've been a resident Carnegie borough for 43 years. I've lived on that street my entire life. When I got married, me and my wife bought a house, that was down from my mom and dad. I was always under the impression, you're not allowed to burn in Carnegie. The county has a very strict, thinking you're not allowed to have no open flames. You're not allowed to have no campfires, no bonfires. That's exactly what this is, this is a bonfire. Not only that, it's pouring something on it to keep it going. So that's what my concern is.
Well, and actually, I believe the mayor brought this to us last month. He started discussing it with the county.
And, 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 um, the defense of our department, too, is this, these things are hard to prove. I mean, if it's not intended...
I understand.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, so that's one thing I will defend, but the... But we have a lot of homes in Carnegie who live or in close proximity. And I know some of the other municipalities around us have looked into, you know, at least time, time limits, what you can burn. I mean, we do have something on the books, and to me, that's still a little confusing. I think we also need to do a better job of informing everybody what is on the books than what we are enforcing. Because it, it gets a little, it's a little confusing, because the commies is one thing, and the news, there's a couple of...
Not only that, the last time the police officers came down, they made him put it out, put it out before midnight. Then he goes and starts a fire between his property and neighbor's property, underneath the trees that are on the creek down. They have the actual fire underneath the trees. And then they go, and I'm glad you guys passed this sentence, because if anybody cares, get out there, he takes all his ashes and all his debris, and the creek it goes.
Well, correction, we didn't pass the ordinance yet, it's just up for review. But once it is passed, it'll be a lot more stringent as far as people bump into the creek.
That's for sure, because like I said, I've been there, I've been flooded twice already.
We take that very seriously, I know this board and myself take it very seriously. Do not dump an acre, period.
And then, like I said, he doesn't purposely burns, he has, it's not a little fire, it's a regular bonfire. And it's sit out there, he has...
That's not one of the...
Yeah, it's two rows of bricks, long circle. And he has about seven to eight logs on there that are burning all the time. And it's, as big as one person as I am, I could probably hide behind the flames sometimes.
You know, that might be simple, that might be something we need to look into, that it needs to be in a self-contained environment, not in, not in open flame. I mean, there's, there's a number of things we could look into. I don't want to, what I don't want to do is take liberties away from other people, but we do need, public, public safety needs to come first. That's, without a doubt, it needs to be paramount.
Mrs. Luke, I've looked into this a little bit, because a couple of people called me and asked me, from what I can understand of it, and Chief Corrigan, if I'm wrong, or Keith Terry, um, you, the county does have an ordinance, but our ordinance kind of superseded. But, you know, I forget what they're called, like, the little chimney type things?
That's right.
Or, or the kind I call it, I call it walk, because it's like, right? And, or you have to have the bricks, but not just, you know? And the two things I know for sure you cannot burn are garbage and tin cans. Now, you know, he could make the point, furniture is breaking up, but it's wood, because you're only allowed to burn wood. But from what I understood, you were only allowed to burn wood.
That's, that's, most furniture could be womanized wood or have polyurethane on it. There's a lot of toxic, a lot of things that are toxic.
This fire burnt for doing plus three, three and a half hours. And it was pouring down rain, and I, I told the officer, I said, what's keeping this fire burning the way it is?
An accelerant.
I mean, and that's scary, because like I said, I have two wooden sheds, probably less than 10 feet from there. And my rental property, on my lot, is right next to that. If there's go, I mean, I'm still trying to get that place together from the flood.
Well, I think we all agree, thank you for coming, and that it's something that we need to do some research and some work on, so, thank you, Mr. Prion.
Is there any other comment?
Oh, no, I just, I think that we all have the urge for going, it's been a long night. I just wanted to go on record, in response to what Mrs. Prion said. We have events and programs at the public library all the time. We invite everybody sitting at this table, we invite everybody sitting in this room. And I am never more thrilled than when all the council, the mayor, even Keith comes. So I just want to go on record as you're more than welcome. Please come, please continue to come.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other corporate comment?
Hello, my name is Amanda Foley, from the Carnegie Towers. Um, I had heard of mention of foot patrol, I heard.
That is correct, we've done some foot patrol at Long Beach, we have, as we have.
Anywhere by the towers.
No, they're going to stay away from the towers. No, of course, they, they, they walk around, when they do the foot patrol, they walk around up there and it's, it's... How do I say this? When officers are visible, I guarantee you, there's less activity. You know, I've heard of things, even that when people see officers, they go and warn others. But, you know, with two officers on duty at any one time, you can't keep two officers visible in any one area for a long time. And plus, when the other one gets the call, when we do a foot patrol, here's the biggest safety concern when we do a foot patrol, is when another officer gets the call, the other off, the officer who's on foot patrol needs to be close to his vehicle so that he can provide backup immediately. Because any situation, especially in today's day and age, any situation can turn from a, a minor traffic stop to, to a major incident in a heartbeat. So backup is extremely important. And that's, that's the primary responsibility of our officers, is, is public safety is first, and then their safety is second. So that, that's why if, um, I know that there have been foot patrols up there, I get to report, I've actually had a few people, one was going to stop down and thank me today, but she had something else happen, but I've had a few people see them and mention it to me. So I'm, I'm assuming that it's really happening. Now, I haven't witnessed it, and I, I trust that they are happening.
The reason I asked is because of the park at the towers. Now, I have met with the woman that runs the building, not, um, I'm not sure, but her boss. We met with her right after our, I met with you guys in the last meeting with Councilor Demko's suggestion of talking to the building management. And we sat down and talked, and I told her the situation with the park, trying to move cameras around, I guess, to get a better view of the park. And I asked about the foot patrol because of the park. Because we had, um, an incident that I reported to the guards that, well, we had police officers in the parking lot, and they were smoking in the park. That's why I asked.
The police officers were smoking in the park?
Oh, no, residents were smoking in the park while we had...
When you say smoking, smoking is, in your 100% sure? Okay, because I guarantee you, I, I will stake my reputation on it, if our officers witnessed that, they would take action, I know they would.
Uh, sure, and they were just down a little further.
And, and, can I tell you, and, and what you're saying is actually, people, police officers can't catch everything, I was at the fireworks with my family, and there was somebody smoking behind me. You know, and I'm thinking to myself, really? Not, not the Carnegie fireworks, no, 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 no. We watch those in the park, but never happened, really. This was actually, this was July 4th, our family reliving fireworks.
I was going to say, there was a...
So if it wasn't a Carnegie park, I guarantee you, I'm going to call the police, I mean, you know? But no, that's a, that's a true story, too. They were, they were young kids, and they were smoking behind us. And, uh, you know, we, we were there in a large group, too. But we're, we're all packed in, so. But I, I understand what you're saying, we take it very seriously, we do.
And like you said, with vacation and everything, you guys have trouble getting officers to sit up there more frequently.
Well, I don't know if it's, if that's the reason, not with the vacation, I, I, you know, we, know, we, and, needless to say, not with you, but I will show you that our officers stop up there frequently, we, every month, and I have the, I have the numbers here, so if you want to s, s, see afterwards, I can show you some of the numbers on how, how frequently we stop up there, but remember, we have a borough that, there's a number of things that happen in the borough, we're, we're not only, you know, we're maybe a small borough area-wise, but we are definitely a thorough care, there are people in and out of this borough constantly, and, and I can tell, I heard that, but, uh, the, you know, there's other areas to patrol, there's other areas that we have to be concerned with too, so, and, and when you only have a couple officers on duty at any one given time, especially on the, you know, like the Minuteman's, you have, it, it takes-
Of course, I understand that, it's just hard, I mean, we have one guard up there, there was an incident where we had to call the police, where they threatened the guard, just things like that.
Yeah, and that, that's going to happen, and that's what he's supposed to do, is call the police, once again, that's a private building, they're supposed to provide their own security, as you know, we're supposed to intervene when their security isn't working, so even when we do our foot patrols, our foot patrols are meant for outside their private facility, we shouldn't be going through people's property unless we see something that's an issue, but I know our foot patrols go in there and everything, but what I'm trying to tell you is that, it's, it's for around, you know, the perimeters and all that. No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing that there's no other comment, we're going to the council for the welfare, Councilman Thank you, Councilman Delosse?
I just want to say, I'm glad to hear that Sue's husband is recovering well. Councilman Deppco was absent from last week's meeting because her husband had an emergency, and we're glad to hear his health.
Councilman Deppco? Yes, I also want to say, it's too glad Tom's better, and congratulations on being a grandma again, and two quick things, I hope everyone has a safe summer, be careful out there, and remember our public safety officers, our policemen, our firemen, our EMTs and paramedics, and also remember our soldiers, if you see a soldier, welcome and thank them for keeping our, our country free, um, you know, the old saying is, how's it going, some, all gave some, some gave all, so, and like I said, have a safe summer, I'll see you next month.
Thank you, Councilman Verris?
Nothing to say.
Thank you, Councilman Sarsfield?
Uh, enjoy, enjoy your summer, get to the beach, get to Kennywood, get to somewhere, find some time to relax in the beautiful weather we've been having.
I have nothing else to comment, thank you very much for coming on this evening, any motion for you there?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, George, follow your favorite, come on, let's say something.
It will be.